Um, hi everyone, welcome to today's town hall. And um, I'll be honest, I I won't be able to do like, um. Peter does it, or Guilermo does it, but I'm going to do it my way, alright? And I hope we have, you know, a whole lot of fun whilst trying to keep abreast on what's happening in the um ecosystem. So this is Town Hall meeting one hundred and twelve, August twenty seven, twenty twenty four. And on the agenda, we have mentions and we have monthly work group updates and we have open topic. So um, as is customary with um. Peter is going to welcome everybody officially. So officially, I welcome Guilermo, thank you for joining. Oyeka, Malik, Ashley, Barnabas, CJ Frankie, Polly, Goga. I wanted to say re day I. Um Sergio, Slade, William and William. Okay, William J, Mark Catan and William Tats. We have lots of Williams in this ecosystem. Alright, welcome everyone to today's town hall. I hope it's going to be brief and it's going to be quick. So um, for the monthly work group updates, it would be nice if each work group. Can give us the summary in two to three minutes so that uh. We don't eat into um the time and go over the hour. Alright. So who are ambassadors? Anyone who wants to learn more about the Singularity Net ecosystem? And contributes to this, to its growth? That's who an ambassador is in Singularity Net. And what do ambassadors do? The Snet communities. Um opportunity to contribute to the growth of the Singularity Net ecosystem. And how do they do it? Ambassadors work together in self-organizing work groups. Which are formed to focus on specific projects and areas of activity within the program. So if you're new here, or this is your first time just joining in. You just joined at the right time because we'll be having work group updates, so you'll be able to get an insight into what all of this is about. So um, for mentions, um, this is like a reminder for every work group on you down there. Budget submission deadline is on the ninth of September twenty twenty four. I I don't know if anybody wants to do a quick mentions that I might have missed, um, anyone? Okay, cool. Goga, are you, are you nodding? Because your avatar just keeps nodding. I don't know. Okay, so uh, we just get right into it. So we have been um guilds and work group updates. So um, as you can see from these charts, we, the gray ones are currently inactive. Um, let me see. Okay, so we have the incubation work group, we have the AI sandbox process ambassadors work group, these are currently inactive. And then we have um the marketing guild, which we have writers work group and video work group in it. We have the translators work group, gamers guild, R and D guild, mojitos work group, onboarding work group. Um Latam ambassadors guild, educational guild, governance work group, AI ethics work group. African ambassadors work group, um archives work group. And in treasury guild, we have the treasury impressions work group, treasury automation work group and treasury policy up group. This is just like a run through all the work groups we have. If you want to, if you are new and you want to learn more. Um where we progress, you'll get to know more and you can actually join our Discord channel to interact with these groups. Alright, um, so we talk for that too. I'm just going to read out the um. The um. Groups, um the guilds and work groups in their, in the order at which they would be given um their updates. So we have the strategy guild followed by the governance work group. Then um, uh, this is optional, the work groups you can call. I don't know if anybody can give an update on this. Uh, we might just skip. Open governance work group, then onboarding work group, archive work group, R and D work group. Another that would have the um AI ethics work group, global ethics initiative, um archive our work group. Education work group, R and D guild, gamers guild, uh, marketing guild, writers work group, video work group. Latam guild, African guild, and that's it. So um. Yeah, so anyone who is representing the strategy work group. I don't know if IO is here or Effyam or William. Or Yemi Souls. Anybody who wants to give um. An update for this, for strategy guild. Anyone? So quiet. Okay, I I I think um, since nobody is doing that. Um, so we have up next is the governor's work group. Um. I think um Guilermo, you can do us the honor by giving us updates on the governor's work group.
Okay, I I will, I will do that. Um, to keep it short, uh, so we have been working on. The second slide that uh S S share on the timeline for the. Q four budget proposals and Q three reports. Um. So that's that. You have been, so S said minutes ago, shared on all the channels, the new deadline, starting uh September the ninth. That is uh on a Monday. And um, then we'll go through the three phases of iterations for consensus. So we have been really working on that, uh, how to uh keep working on the procedure. And having a more effective standardized process. Um, trying to learn from our mistakes. We have been discussing also on regards of um. What will happen in case a work group or guild doesn't present in time and how we can. Again, try to make a fair uh decision-making process, getting everyone engaged. And the other thing that we have been. Addressing is the um, the lack of uh engagement on this process. So we will try different strategies uh that will include education. So we have been working on infographics to help uh bring in awareness. Um. And then what else? S, you were there with me, helped me with with this one. Oh yeah, and um. And and also we, for the last couple of weeks, we have been addressing the need to have a strategy. Draft and design for these market fluctuations. So how the core contributors or the work groups or guilds will address this. Uh differences in market price for the assets we receive. Um, we went through studying all the possibilities we have. We still haven't. Uh, well. Have a conclusion on it, uh, but we'll get there. And it was good for the last Thursday. Governance goal to have TiVo back to bring some clarity on where we are. Uh, so yeah, important issues. Um, and we're looking forward to have you, all you guys engaging on the next governance. So this Thursday, uh thirteen hours UTC. I think that that will be a wrap for this one.
Alright, thank you so much, um Guilermo. I think you just respo on. You just took just three minutes, which is very great. And it's like um. Um, an indicator for other work groups as well. So uh, moving on, the next work group would be. I think um governance work group, um. Oh. So we're supposed to start with treasury, actually. Oh my god, okay. Um, not bad, not too worry. Um, does, is anyone available for treasury? Work treasury guild, treasury policy work group, treasury pressures work group, treasury automation work group. Is anybody here?
Um, I guess then.
Yeah.
Yeah, would you?
Alright, so um for this month, treasury policy treasury guild. And treasury automation are currently on a break. While um for the operations itself, um, we. Still have um calls, which is to dispose payments to members for their work. So so far, it's been going well. Uh, yeah, why the other work group sound break? So no meetings for now.
Okay, thank you so much, um CJ. Uh, Boaz, do you have a question? Because I saw your answer up.
Yes, sorry to interrupt. Uh, I saw a mail that was saying that Singularity Net is out uh till September. So I didn't think that uh this quarter will be today.
I don't know who has answered to that question, because I didn't receive any mail regarding Singularity Net being out. I think we have some people go for summer break. Um, that's, that's what I know about. Like, some people went for summer break. So maybe to work group you are with or something, I've tried to shed that, but I'm not aware if there was like a general. Um, break for everyone. Okay, thank you very much for that. Um, so up next is the process guild. Anyone up, I think um process guild is kind of like um. Not functioning properly, but uh do we have someone from there that wants to say something? Or we just move to knowledge-based work group? Anyone from knowledge base? I know that's TiVo. Um, but I don't know. Who else attends those meetings? Because I've never been to one. I think I just attended once. Hey, um, Dwork PBL work group. Think that's also TiVo.
Yeah, definitely, that's, that's TiVo. So, but anyone that have been participating, wanna bring an up, uh, an update?
Um, for knowledge base, I'm sorry to, I was expecting Malik to go ahead, but then just give something brief for knowledge base. So for knowledge base, um, as usual, we have our meetings by weekly. And um this month, we looked at some of the um documents from the writers' work group. Uh, we tried to uh analyze them and see those that could be added into the um Singularity Net's guidebook. So uh, we copied out some documents and then I think by next week, we're gonna have another call. Where we will now um organize those items into the, into the guidebook. So that's, that's from the late days. Then for Dwork PBL, um Malik, do you want to take this one?
Um, regarding Dwork PBL.
Yeah.
Okay, uh, so regarding Dwork PBL, we are working on participation contribution tooling uh for a Zoom. Where uh we can record the uh ratio between the contribution and participation. And it is what we had discussed during the past two meetings. Uh, with Daniel and we had three new members and a couple of other members that do, that joined. Uh, Dwork PBL mi- uh meeting and discussed some of the issues and stuff that. They had encountered while taking the course of Dwork. And it had been made compulsory uh for uh tragedy operators to take Dwork PBL course beforehand. To take part in tragedy operations. That is what that happened in the last month.
Okay, thank you so much, um Malik. And I'm loving your, your avatar, by the way. Uh, oh, so we just joined in. Don't know if we. Just, I am hoping now. Should we um wait for him to get a minute and then um. Give his um update on treasury? Or not? Hi, TiVo. Oh, Tevo. Hi, how you doing? It's nice to have you back. Your voice sounds so cool. I think you're still enjoying the holidays.
Uh, we had a lot of discussions indeed, also about how horrible vacation I had because of AIPES. But that's a project that is not Singularity, which is much, there is much more good news. I see progress and meetings from others and things happening where in other places, things just go crashing down as soon as I. And take off my eye.
Alright, it's so good to have you back. I'm so sorry about your holiday experience. Um, so you just um came in right on time to give like an update on the uh on treasury policy work group. Treasury guild, treasury pressure work group, treasury automation work group. For process guild, knowledge base and um Dwork PBL, for knowledge base and Dwork PBL. Oyeka and Malik already gave like an update, so yeah. I don't know if you would want to go for it for treasury and then um we can go on.
Yeah, I have, don't have much updates to share from myself, but for future, like next uh week, everything gets. Back on started and you can expect a lot of planning for proposals and quarter report reviews.
Alright, alright, thank you so much, TiVo. Um. So um up next, um the strategy guild, do we have someone now? Or should we just move along with it? Um, does anybody wants to speak? Um CJ, Mikasa? Hmm, who else, who else, who else? Um. Oyeka, I I I don't want Oyeka to speak because she's been speaking a lot, but if you want to speak, you can actually go for it.
Yeah, I would have, um, gone for it. I I I didn't attend the last two calls, so. I think it's fair enough for someone like CJ to speak on it.
Yeah, Omicasa, because I think we, the last thing we had, she was super excited about the strategy guild. I don't know if she can speak on it. Okay, um, I think nobody's going to be speaking for strategy guild. Because I can't give a report myself, because I missed some of the meetings. For overall, I think um one of some of the sessions I joined in, what happened in strategy guild was um trying to. Um, do like a deep dive on what we are doing in the uh ambassadors program. When it comes to outbound uh messages and the strategies we have in place, what we're doing right and what. We need to improve upon and how we can make the process seamless. And each of these sessions actually gave us insight. And I was like, whoa, wow, we are doing a lot. And but but you would not know because you cannot be in all the work groups at the same time. So it gave like an insight into what we are doing right and how we can improve on our efforts to get much more. Exciting results. I think that's about it for my end. Um, I hope I did a good job. And if I didn't, I apologize. So I'm just going to move on to the next um onboarding work group. Uh, so anyone who wants to. So we have a whole lot of onborders, yes, so that shouldn't be an issue, so yeah. CJ, go for it. Thank you.
Um, alright, um, I am CJ Frankie and I'll be sharing some of the notable moments from the onboarding work group. Even though we didn't uh meet as we know, can you guys hear me?
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Alright, so uh even though we didn't meet as we normally would, we were still able to achieve some remarkable feats. On August fifteenth, the onboarding work group hosted a documentation section, which was led by our very own Lady Tempest. Who showcased um what a meeting summary should be like. She gave uh some examples and. Um exploring the features of a good meeting summary. The session on the fifteenth also marked the presence of many individuals who picked um interest in learning how to document. For work groups and guilds. So in case you missed the documentation section, don't fret. We have um, we have a slide and a video recording in the work group channel, so anyone can, can um access them. And you know, make use of them. And um secondly, the second update I was like to share is. Um, how the onborders are doing with um with new members. So currently, we have um around um thirty, thirty people who have shown interest in joining the um the Snet ambassadors and program. So each set of onborders has around um five to eight people. They are, um, they are onboarding at the, at the moment. And this is how we do it. Once we cite a person who shows interest in joining the, the program, the onborders um contact them. So we already have um some people whose um onboarding status has um, has changed from, you know, being contacted. Some has changed to uh in progress, to a review and stuff like that. So um some new members do are finding it difficult to understand how the ambassador program is being run. The um onboarding is um, is a, is a continuous process, so to speak. So with the onborders um approach things, you know, di- um differently. But the most interesting um thing is that each of uh, each of the new members. Um, is enjoying the one-on-one onboarding process. Um, we are, you know, we are giving to them. And yeah, that's pretty much it.
Alright, um, I think that was um interesting. Um, thank you so much for that update. Um, kudos to the onboarding work group for your effort for um this month of um August. Um, so moving along, we have the archives work group. Uh. I was going to do that. Do we have anyone that's going to be giving um monthly updates for the archival group? I think uh, I don't know if we have any to give, because we actually had a beautiful break. Yeah, and resume September, so let's just move over to R and D. So let's make welcome the R and D guild. And um who'll be giving us um the updates for this work group. I'm looking forward to hearing amazing stuff. CJ, I please.
I'm gonna jump on this one, uh um. Uh, to give a brief update, but um we have shared on the, on the channels. Uh, we have a new operation system uh already in place with a call to action. We are open uh for new proposals from all uh members of the community or contributors. There's a, this new operation system that we drafted for the last month and a half. Uh, with all the members that participated in our weekly Wednesday meetings. Uh, we have accounted all ideas. We have been working for this for the last month and a half. And we are happy and excited to share this. This also, this announcement was shared on the, on the ambassador's social media. Um, of course, there's always roots of improvement, but uh I invite you guys to click on the link. Share on the R and D channel and the ambassador general. Uh, and understand uh a little bit more of what we are trying to do. But as we shared last week, it's a. The challenge is to become an idea-driven guild, not a member guild-driven. Uh, and also not to open uh the guild for all members. As I, we are looking forward to your proposal, but also for uh. Having the community engaging on the decision on where we allocate these resources. Um, personally, I I wanna thank uh Lord Kisi. Uh, or Oyeka, as you guys can see on the chat, that Lord Kisi, mi amigo. Uh, thank you very much for all your work on this. Um, it has been a challenge. Uh, also, I see some R and D members here that have been participating on this, like Kenichi. Um. Micaasa joined a couple of meetings. Uh, Malik, so Emmanuel. Um, and new members that are helping to deliver on, on the skills database. But yeah, we have delivered by the end of this quarter, uh, four. The starting proposals that we uh start building. Uh, Q one and Q two, they're gonna be finished. So that's a good achievement for the guild. Uh, and yeah, we're learning from our mistakes and trying to reinforce uh our success. Um, and so again, I invite everyone to click on the link and to understand. Uh, a little bit more of how you can present the proposals. Um, yeah, that's, I think that will wrap it up. I see S is joining back. Okay, that's another S.
Oh yeah, I'm here. I I just needed to join in with my other device, because um I think. This sort of my device would soon go off any moment, so that uh it don't spin effects. Yeah, so moving on, um AI ethics work group, I think I'll just give that. Uh, stand up, the obvious myself. I said stand up.
S A?
Oh, okay, Polly. Yeah, yeah, I can hear you.
I was gonna, Vanny, Vanny had suggested that I, that I say a few things, if that's okay.
Oh, that's okay, because um Vanny actually sent me a couple of things to say, but if you want to do it, then you can go be too.
She did it with both of us then.
Yeah.
If she sent you the same thing, then go ahead.
No, 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 you, you do it, Polly. It's okay, honestly.
Are you sure? Alright, I can do it. Let's see.
No, no, no.
Okay, alright. We had a really good month. Of course, we were very busy in AI ethics. We had developed three of the uh strategies uh for uh research and um knowledge. And um the ethics uh strategies, it all been uh redone. And uh that was part of a project that we undertook and had to do it as a group effort, so that was pretty, pretty impressive for us to at least complete that. We did pretty well with it. Um, let me get to the other one. I'm sorry, hang on just a second here. There we go. Alright, now the other things we had this month were, of course, the AGI twenty four, which is our yearly conference. Uh, we did chill out rooms there, which were uh just for a couple of hours each day. Gives people another place to go, especially virtual people. We met a couple really amazing people. Uh, one guy was um really into the meta language and he discussed a lot of things uh with us about it. And uh that was very interesting for us. And then at the end, we had another man from China who was also very interesting. I don't know if I'm skipping anyone, I'm sure about who else was there, but um we had several people that were um. Very um interesting to have. So then, but the conference itself was amazing, a very, of course, technical. A bit, it was uh informative and we all uh enjoyed being there. Um. Um, let's see, I'm going without the thing here. I'm going without the uh. The uh, the little thing that she gave us, figures, right, S A? I haven't know. So what other things that we did do were, um, the um. Okay, where's uh the uh, so then we had the that group. Um, what else did we have this this month? I don't have the the thing that she gave us now. You have to find it, I say, it's crazy. Anyway, so that's what we've done. We've done a lot this month and uh we just appreciate your support. If you have any questions, just let me or I say no.
Alright, thank you. I I I think you kind of like um provide everything, yeah. Uh, except for um the fact, for the interview that we will be conducting, yeah. Yeah, the research.
And what is that? You still hadn't found the actual piece yet. What was the interview piece?
Yeah, the um research interviews with people's families, friends and professional connections. And our next meeting is on Monday, second of September at fourteen UTC. Everyone is welcome, in Vanny's voice.
Thank you.
So, thank you. Yeah, thank you so much, Colleen. You would add that uh part that I think she must have missed. So I think it was best you did the stand-up, actually, the update. I don't know why I keep saying stand-up. Uh, so up next is the um Education Work Group, and I think I see Slate. And the room, hi Slate.
Hello, S A.
Hi.
Hello, everybody. Yeah, all good. Okay, um, so uh from education side, um. We have our project, uh AA for Beginners. Uh, we started the blueprint creation this quarter. And uh it has been finalized uh by the end of this month, most probably, by our next meeting, that's going to be tomorrow. Uh, then we have a core contributor certification program uh on its way. And uh it's almost heading towards completion. Uh, so you guys, whomever is core contributor right now, will be able to get certified. Uh, through that program, uh receiving a badge and an N F T as a reward, also some um monetary rewards. Uh, but it's yet to be decided. Uh, so from that side, the quizzes completion has been done. Uh, the last final exam creation is left, uh which will be completed uh soon as well. And uh we are going to be launching the Core Contributor Certification Program by the start of next quarter as well. So, uh, another project we have is the Chatbot L L M. Um, we are completed with its UI development. And uh, yeah, most of the resources are also um. Feed it to the L M and uh it's almost uh, it's almost going to completion as well. And yeah, lastly, we are also having discussions regarding budget request and quarterly reports are also under making. So yeah, thank you.
Thank you, Slate. Uh, thank you so much for the updates. I I I I I I'm pretty uh excited about the um certification program. And I hope I pass, I guess, certified, actually. Also, um. Uh, did you just give us like the updates for Gamer Skill? Because I think that's last R and D already did updates.
Yeah, sure. Okay, uh, so from Gamer Skill side, uh, actually, I have a playlist. So, just to avoid the technicals, uh, everything is uploaded in the playlist. So if anybody is interested to see that, uh, you guys can hop on in the playlist. We have tutorials of what we are building. And you can visually see it over there. Uh, from the non-technical side, uh, we have uh, we have basically cutscenes being developed. Uh, from the game, uh, the VR for uh the Ambassador Program. Uh, we have got scenes being created right now. Uh, we also have its uh whole model being created. In which we are including the terrain of the whole VR. Uh, then we have AGIX, we are setting up AG-AGIX as the in-game currency for the game. And then, uh, lastly, and the main thing, we are also collaborating with Sophia Wirs on this. And uh, setting up a dialogue system uh with them, uh, which is going to be led by the. Uh, hyperon al-algorithm, basically. So, yeah, the backend is going to be from Hypercycle. And uh, Sophia Wirs is going to be collaborating with us from the front end of the site. So, yeah, uh, great stuff going on over there as well, so yeah.
Alright, thank you. I see some comments regarding your updates. Um, Emmanuel is amazed, obviously. And um TiVo asked the question, why is it not uploaded on YouTube? Okay, I think you already answered that, that's a problem. Alright, um, moving on, thank you so much, Slate, for that. That's amazing. Um, I I thought Gamer Skill is just about playing games. Uh, I now I know that there's more to it than just to go and to do some Discord games. Yeah, I think you guys will be seeing me more often now. Yeah, um, up next, we have Marketing Guild. Um, don't know who's going to be doing that stand-up. Kenichi. Oneeka, I don't know if Foutuchi is here. Omikasa, no, um, Omikasa, anyone? So who's um given the stand-up? Because IO is not here. Oh yeah, I was listening for you.
Alright, alright. Um, good day, everyone. Um, so for this month, we. Uh, we actually share the Community Spotlight, uh, which you can see on the. Our Silarit's Twitter page and. However, to the, to do that, then also we. We uh clarify use our responsibilities. Uh, now we have the task force. By next to government, select the task force members, uh, uh, whether twice, uh. We also, uh, now we are actually by the information page. And uh, we have obtained the license for Figma, which is currently used by the graphic design team. So, we're going to use Figma to create graphic designs for the, for the Marketing Guild. And uh, uh, still, uh, let's see, coming next month, we'll be working on one of the project reports. And uh. Yeah, and the Q four. So, uh, actually, if there's anything I'm listening, please just clarify.
Papers come again, I think I didn't get that.
Yeah, actually, if there's anything I'm listening, just help me clarify.
Oh, okay, yeah, I think uh you covered most of it. I think more more of the things you left out was um some of the initiatives that we have in the pipeline, like the cross. Collab, the Zili cross collab, which we do. Also, um, of the social media initiatives, we have to engage the our followers on X. I think that's what we have. And then um, I think we are also looking into other platform. That um Singularity Net just um launched on and wants to see how to, you know. To um, and it's, okay, I think Kenishi wants to speak, unless um. The followers, the community in that's, in that's particular, um, please, uh, Kenishi, you can go for it.
Alright, um, hello, everyone. Uh, I hope everyone's having a great uh evening, at least for my sense of evening time. So, um, for the Marketing Guild, yeah, Lord Kisi and S A cover most of it. Uh, just to shed more light, the Reju Sprint is on right now. So, and uh, yeah, we're doing a cross-collab with them. And officially, to our Zili, uh, would be, the new sprint will be starting today. So with this new sprint, too, we are going to be incorporating uh the Zili collab. So there will be a specific module only related to Zili uh for the Reju side. Uh, we'll be taking some quests from their side, uh, some quests from our side, basically, so stay tuned for that. And um also, yeah, just like S A mentioned, the Singularity Net official accounts have been launched on the Upcast. I don't know if everyone is familiar with uh, it's a farcaster uh protocol platform. So, yeah, we are also going to be creating an account for that, for the Ambassador Program. So we can help uh stimulate a bit of uh engagement from that side. And uh, we have also like a few other platforms that we also like uh researching at the moment. And uh, we are going to be incorporating a few other campaigns. Uh, S A personally has a forwarded one. And uh, we are fine-tuning it at the moment, so you can expect a bit of a uh little marketing campaign, too. We might be doing that with Zili or any other tool, but uh more announcements will follow on that. And um also with the Marketing Guild, just like the, with the task force now in place and everything, we're going to be. Yeah, quite more efficient with all our deliverables, basically, so you can expect that uh more initiatives uh will come up uh along the way. So, thanks.
Alright, thank you, uh, Kenishi. And also, yeah, there's a lot of campaigns coming up. I think you'll see more in September. I hope we don't get tired of it, actually. So, uh, I think up next will be the Right Aswell Group. Don't know who's going to be given, um.
Yeah, thank you, thank you, S A. Hello, everyone, I'm Gorga. I'm representative from Waters Work Group. For monthly updates from the Waters Work Group, there are two updates, namely. First, the Zili sprints organized by Waters Work Group have been completed with one hundred participants who participated in this Zili sprints. And where the winners have been announced by Kenichi and the prizes are on the way. Thirty participants will be rewarded for their time and effort in the last sprint, which has more participants than the previous sprint. And the last updates, regarding the publication of the monthly Waters Work Group Substack Newsletter. It is always delayed because some meeting summaries are not accessible and available. So the Waters Work Group has assigned it note takers to various workgroups. And good meetings to record the main discussion and then convert them into concise summaries. For Waters Work Group Substack Newsletter. That's all the updates from Waters Work Group that I have shared. Thank you.
Thank you so much, Gorga. That was impressive for this way. The numbers are really, really great. I think Kenishi has his end up again, so yeah, Kenishi. Please, Gorga, you can take your hands down if you're done.
Um, thank you so much, Gorga, for that wonderful update. I just wanted to add that also, we have uh on-boarded two new scribblers over this mo- past month. And we currently have like uh about uh three to four, I think, three to four submissions currently pending review. With one actually looking quite promising, so good to be able to reach out to that person to onboard them fully into the workgroup. So that'll probably make the third. And um also, we have uh surpassed our initial expectations for our subscriptions. Uh, the Community uh Spotlight, the Community Page on Medium now is almost about hundred followers, which was. Quite a huge boost from, I think, twenty uh at the beginning of the month, uh, which is really great. And also, we are all getting a bit closer to three hundred followers on our main Medium page, so that's also really great. Uh, just like uh Gorga mentioned, our Zili had over hundred participants this time, which is actually a new record. So we had over about, I think, one hundred and seventeen participants, uh, which in a way, we might need to update or upgrade our package on Zili. Because we can't really export all those uh participants and their activities right now. So, but like, yeah, we are doing really great numbers and we have more people coming in. And uh, yeah, so expect more from the Right Aswell Group.
Alright, thank you so much for that, um. Oh, okay. Thank you so much, Kenishi, for the updates and thank you so much, Right Aswell Group, for what you're doing. Um, moving on, we have the Video Work Group. Oneeka, do you want to speak or is it going to be someone else? It's been Slid.
Yep.
Alright, Slid, go for it.
Um, for which workgroup?
Video Work Group.
Okay, uh, Casey, would would you like to cover for it? Because I I didn't prepare for that. Sorry.
Alright, well, okay, let me just get one. So, for this month, uh, we've already remember that name is a visual, uh, and uh. Now, we've got the editorial assessment, so we are hoping to bring more, first, more of the requests from the work. Just to improve the engagement. Um, now, uh, for this month, also, we analyze the conference for the region. As for the political control, and currently, it's, the process is ongoing. So, we have uh, recent reviewers, um, and uh, also. Also, we put this social media function, too, which is quite a bit uh, interesting, like, uh. So, once everything is done, this month, coming month, uh, we'll be able to try out some platforms. Let's say Twitter, uh. Twitter, Instagram and TikTok, uh, and see how it goes for the month, probably now pushing up. So, uh, that's that, and uh. Yeah, so, we have done much on creating, from, pretend videos due to the budget deficiency. For, um, going forward. As you, as you all can see, now, we're talking about this, whites coming up, so. Uh, starts meeting more, uh, and then things that's on. Yeah, and also, uh, we look as an animation platforms, also, we wanna, uh, stretch it, show the guys the difference. Uh, in fact, we, at least our content has been created, and I was mainly stuck with this one on the better matches. So, we're currently analyzing different platforms, and uh, maybe this, when our next goal, we make a decision on that. What platform are we, which we, or the next one. That's true. So, you want to talk more?
Okay, are you, are you done?
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Okay, um, I think my device, I don't know what happened to it. But I don't know if my presentation is showing. If not.
We can't see it.
Okay, uh, just give me a moment, but I think up next is, um. Latam, Latam Guild, yeah.
Okay, so I guess that's me again, so, um. Um, okay, so last month have been uh quite, uh, moving down here. We we were uh invited to two events uh by, um. The foundation asked us to represent on the ADM event in Buenos Aires. So, we travel uh there and um we have a nice chat with Charles Oskinson from Cardano. Um, and we reached out with all uh the communities, the web three communities and the AI developers. On the Latam scene, it was a great experience. We uh have a chance to do a lot of interviews, uh, and outreach. Uh, to keep onboarding new members to the program and also uh for the next deep funding. Um, round five, probably coming at the end of October. Um, also, we were, are reaching to have uh this uh. Um, alliance with new communities from uh Metapool, from Ethereum, from uh, we have uh. Uh, Maria Carmo from Brazil, uh, joining the forces from the, to the ESNET Latam. Uh, so it wa- it was fun and exciting and um we will keep uh uploading uh the interviews. Uh, uh, in this format of uh fast talks that we are putting on our, in our media. And then, um, we also have one of the, um, on-boarded members. Uh, at Joint Forces at the beginning of this quarter, Martin, um. Presenting a Singularity Net and uh, and deep funding, again, Singularity Net ecosystem and spin-off. And vision and mission on a big event in Buenos Aires. Uh, there is a monthly event that is, eh, crecimiento. and vision and mission on a big event in Buenos Aires, there is a monthly event, that is, uh Crescimento. Uh that is a pop-up city that um uh is still going on in Buenos Aires City. Um so it was a full packed auditorium that we have the chance to present um SingularityNet, vision and mission, talk a little bit about Ben's uh vision on AGI, um benevolent AGI and all what we have been learning. So have been quite a busy month uh for the Latam and we're looking forward to, yeah, keep everyone on the loop. And um yeah, keep working on the next steps are are uh our token, the chili pepper token, we are almost done with it. Um I still have to reach out with TiVo and talk a little bit about treasury to keep understanding where our our strengths and limitations, um and yeah, more to come on the Q three report and Q four budget proposal. Then again, uh we mind uh remind to everyone uh we are going to be opening the door for this to happen next Monday, uh September ninth. So uh what we will try to achieve in next month, uh will come in that uh report and proposal.
Um alright, thank you so much. We love that, I don't know if you can help share screen. Um I think we're almost done, I'm gonna um next would be African Guild. Okay, that's. Who is representing the African Guild for today's session? Thank you, Slid, bye. I think I'm just a bit want to go for it. Um so the Africa, we've been able to achieve what? Well, the nations, um SingularityNet's message, I think that's has been done, then second of all, we have been able to onboard ambassadors from four different countries. Africa, which is uh Kenya, Cameroon. And now, um we've been talking about self-representation. We also, we also plan it on a co-conference.
I barely heard what you said.
Not able to hear you, S A, you speak up just a little bit?
Oh, so sorry, am I being heard now? Oh. And I was just going on and on, I'm so sorry about that. Um I said, what we've been able to achieve um in the African Guild basically is uh we have been able to finish um the phase two of the um penetration, um African penetration, um documentation, re- re- research on how we can bet better express SingularityNet to other people in Africa, like tailoring it to their culture, their beliefs, their traditions and stuff like that and to be able to onboard them successfully. And some of our marketing initiatives that we did, we were able to onboard twelve new ambassadors into the program from four different countries, namely Rwanda, Cameroon, Kenya and Ghana. And then we are also working on the physical conference, which um we are doing in collaboration with AI Ethics Work Group, which is the AI Ethics Expo, which would be happening in Abuja, Lagos, Nigeria. Um I think that that's what I have at the top of my head right now. I um if I'm missing out on anything, maybe somebody else can actually help me with that, but yeah, I I think that's about it for my end and we are like five minutes um I took over the hour.
I have a question, S A, when was the Ethics Convention in Nigeria, when was that?
It's it has not happened yet, I said it's in the pipeline, but it will be happening in Abuja, Lagos, Nigeria, so if you want to, you you know, if you want to come in. Uh I I would love Guillermo to be there, you know, come my express Nigeria and there are Nigeria, Jolof, I don't know if you've heard of that before. So, yeah.
No, when are they planning on doing that?
Um I'm looking at September, um give me a moment, let me bring up the dates. Um the twenty eighth of September.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome, did you want to come? We can actually, that's in how we can. How we can have that.
I I won't be available to actually come, no, but I wanted to see if there would be something maybe online for it.
Uh, okay, okay, I I I get it, I get it. Um so moving on to the next slide, I think we have, this is open round, so it's open discussion, don't know if anybody has anything they want to say, um if you have new commerce, I don't know. Um I think uh I don't know, AJ, I don't know if this is your first time. Hmm, should we say welcome or not? That I really don't know if it's your first time or not, don't know if anybody has anything they want to say. Or you have any questions that you want to ask, you can and then you can just um indicate and give you the mic to go for it. Silence. Um, okay, I think just to retrace the um budget submission concern. It should be important that we actually submit our budgets, um deadline is ninth of September. Um the link will be shared shortly. Hmm, I don't know when, but hopefully it should be shared before um the ninth of September. Don't know if you have anything you want to say, Guillermo, Unika, TiVo, AJ, Ashley, Anabaz, CJ, Holly, Daniel, Maryman, Mikasa, Sergio Williams. Um William. Two. Oh, welcome AJ, this is AJ's first time on the meeting. Welcome, 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 it's so lovely to have you here, you're welcome. Um I think I I I'm learning how to speak Latami beats, gracias, gracias. Is it ami, ami, I don't know if I should say ami, amigo, or if you say amigo. Okay.
Gracias, S A, great stuff, thank you for hosting.
Thank you so much, everyone, for joining today's session, I think that's about it for today. Um bye, guys, uh thank you for joining.
Thank you, S A, great stuff, great work. See you guys.
Bye, everyone, thanks for.